Right, at seven o'clock, everybody ready? Call to order the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, July the 19th. You would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, please remain standing. We will be led in prayer this evening by Father Todd Goodson of Our Lady of Greenwood Parish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brothers and sisters, we listen to the words of the Apostle Paul to the Philippians. If there is any encouragement in Christ, any solace in love, any participation in the Spirit, any compassion and mercy, complete my joy by being of the same mind, with the same love, united in heart, thinking one thing. Do nothing out of selfishness or out of vain glory. Rather humbly regard others as more important than yourselves, each looking out not for his own interests, but also everyone for those of others. And so we pray. Almighty God, we give you thanks for the many and varied ways you build up a Christian community and the community here in Greenwood. We ask that you would bless the officers of the Greenwood Council, that they, through their vision and direction, they may be of service to our city. Bring honor and glory to your name. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, may be seated. Roll call.
Bates.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Donovan.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Hopper.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Williams.
Here. We have quorum. All of you should receive copies of the minutes tomorrow regular meeting of July the 7th. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion Mr. Bates, second. Second. Second by Mr. Dine. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call on the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Then it's our approval, a vote of nine to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
You should have received the item semi-monthly and also at least semi-annual, but we have to file in July and January of each year, the July report and litigation report on the share form for your review. And if you have questions about any of those, please let me know by answering the poll.
All right, any questions at this time? All right, anything from the controller?
Nothing in the stack.
Committee and Board reports, all of you should receive copies of the report from the last RDC meeting. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. Any other committee or board reports? All right, hearing none. This is a time to set aside for public comments, and if you're here tonight, either in person or online, and would like to address the council concerning an item that is on the agenda, this is your opportunity. There's a five-minute time limit. If you would speak up or come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Hearing none, then moving on to ordinances and resolutions. There are none under notice of intent to consider, none under first reading, second reading. Resolution 2116.
A resolution declaring certain personal property, machinery, equipment for tax abatement, non-technology, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion Mr. Dine, second. Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion, resolution 2116? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2116, second reading.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Resolution 2116 passes second reading, nine to zero. New business, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance 2127.
An ordinance to amend Greenwood Municipal Code 1993 as amended, Chapter 3, Article 1, Division 2, Regulations governing the Common Council to add Section 321, establishing procedures to permit Common Council members to participate in public meetings by electronic means and to amend Section 320 regarding meeting minutes, sponsored by Dine and Gibson.
Like, I'll talk about this one. If, we talked about this a little bit last time, and y'all's received copies. This, we had, like last time, Mr. Lexi wasn't here, we could, even tonight, you can attend the council meeting virtually, as long as it's noted, noticed ahead of time. But that's under the emergency order put out by the governor. At some point, that emergency order is going to end. He can only do it for 30 days at a time. We don't know yet if he'll, he will extend it beyond the end of July. If he does, then there's no problem. If you can't be here in person, you can attend virtually. However, if he does not extend that emergency order, without this ordinance, at our next meeting, you will not be able to attend virtually, that you will have to be here in person. I don't see any need to rush this, but just so you'll know, if we don't pass it, next time, and there is no extension of the emergency order, next time, you will not be able to attend virtually. There are some conditions put out by the state and some conditions that are, other than what the state is required, that are in here. I would encourage you to read through those. It limits the number of meetings that you can attend virtually in a calendar year. It limits, we have to have a quorum of counselors here in person, so no more than four counselors can participate electronically in any one meeting. And it does limit it to six virtual meetings in a calendar year. I will let, let you know, the state would permit up to 50%. Six meetings is 25%. So that's up to you, if you want to keep it at that, or if you want to change it. And you cannot do more than two consecutive meetings unless you meet some criteria, like you're in the military service or some of that nature, death of a relative, those kind of things. But something for us to consider, I think being able to attend virtually is a good thing. And, you know, so I'm glad to see this, but that's the reason for this ordinance. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I have one. I wonder about Section 3-21B. It seems like that's a little confining. If you believe that you're gonna have to not be present in order to do it electronically, you have to notify you, the president, and clerk, another than seven or two hours. That's like three whole days.
Right, the purpose for that is the, for the, you be able to attend virtually, the meetings have to be noticed as virtual meetings? And that makes, that gives us the, the notification for virtual, for meetings has to be out the Friday before? I mean, is that correct?
Under the open door law, you have to have 48 hours notice of the meeting. If you're going to allow electronic participation, you also have to allow the public to participate electronically. So to make sure that you've got the Zoom information up there and you're set up at home or wherever you are to be able to participate electronically, it was thought it would be a good idea to notify IT so they can make sure there's arrangements and plenty of time to make sure that everything's set to go. So when we post the notice of the meeting, everybody knows who's participating electronically, who's gonna be in person, and what that Zoom information is. That was the reason behind that.
So we're already doing that now, because that's the cause of the second one.
Well, it, usually they are noticed, but not all of them have been noticed as Zoom meetings. We, we notice the meetings, but there hasn't at least one meeting where it was not noticed 48 hours in advance that it was going to be a virtual meeting.
I see that, I hear that word, 48 hours, but we have 72.
Well, seven, we have, the clerk's office has to send it out 48 hours in advance. And if you wait till 48 hours, it may be too late, for, they may have already sent it out. So the, this just gives us 24 hours before that to make sure that the clerk and the IT department have all that information. It's just a safety measure.
Would it be easier to just have every meeting virtual?
I think we probably will do that, but...
Today's Wall Street craft, because COVID's coming back and we're, we're acting like it's not. I mean, we're, we're optimistic, I should say.
Yeah.
But why, why don't we, is it that much trouble of just having?
No, I think we are, probably will notice all the meetings as virtual. But in case something happened, you know, that it wasn't done, if, in that case, if you needed to attend virtually, you would not be able to.
It just seems to me that it'd be easier to say that they're all virtual than to each week have to decide whether the next meeting is going to be virtual or not.
Well, I'm sure all the meetings will be virtual. We'll still allow the public to be in, just, this is about the counselors, whether or not we can. It's really just, I mean, we don't, I assume we don't have to do this, but I believe it's a good safety measure to make sure that if, if you're going to attend virtually, that you have that opportunity. If, so there are no mistakes, at least less chance of a mistake being made.
And you know how many people are. So you don't have like, have a certain percentage, if you be live in person, well suddenly, suddenly you want to do virtual, or suddenly you cannot. So I think that's the other reason why they just, it sort of puts the council president and the clerk on notice to make arrangements to make sure that the Zoom information is correct and posted, and they know the number of people who will be in person and who will be participating electronically.
How many people required to be in person?
Five. We have to have a quorum in person. And that's a state requirement.
At the last meeting, I had a cold and I didn't want to come, but I couldn't have given 72. Really, it's five days' notice. You know, I just would have been absent, I suppose. It seems to me that we're leaning that direction rather than promoting the ability to show up virtually.
All right.
I have another question, just, I just want to share something, I guess. Under Section D, 321, Section D, it makes reference to, I'm sorry, C, military service, illness, or other medical condition. And back when John had his transplant, he was not able to be in public areas for about four and a half months. And he would have been really happy to have participated in council meetings. And of course, we didn't have such an option at that time. But cancer is a beast, and there's a lot of families that go through that more and more, and sometimes it's children that are involved. So I don't know if we can change that, but I'd just like to put that thought out there.
That was actually said by statute, that those are the, well, those are the conditions. Now, if you want to change the number of meetings, but the state statute does say you, if you can contain, you can attend a set of meetings too, and then you have to have a good person before you can then attend another electronically, unless one of those conditions applies. That's a statutory thing.
This allows you to attend multiple meetings consecutively if you're ill or have a medical condition.
And those are the only ones, those four things.
Would it still be a limit to six meetings?
Under this one, yes, under what we have put, you could, the statute allows you to allow people to miss up to 50% of the meetings and participate 50% in virtual. You just put in six, or four of them, if you do not like that, certainly that's open for discussion.
I'm not saying we should change it, I'm just putting that out there because I know it was, it was difficult for John to know that he mentally could have done that, but couldn't.
Right, well, it's, these kinds of issues, that's why I wanted to make sure everybody read it. Apparently, everybody did. So, these are things we can, you know, address, and if you wish to, let's give everybody some time to think about it, but we can amend it at our next meeting, if you also desire, any way you wish.
If some things can be amended, as they're stated in the state statute.
Well, yeah, well, the things that have been addressed tonight can be. So, Mr. Dine?
I'm just gonna go ahead and see if we could amend it tonight to 50, you can miss 50% of meetings by attending virtual rather than...
Okay.
By suspending the rules to do a reading, because normally you don't make amendments unless it's on the floor for discussion.
Okay, I was gonna say, if I can't do it tonight, we'll do it the next meeting.
Yeah, you know.
I was just gonna get it out of the way if we do it tonight.
Right, that, normally it would be under the first reading, so. All right?
Just know it's coming next meeting.
All right, all right, we'll, we'll plan on that. Any other discussion at this time? This is, honestly, it's a, an unusual ordinance, and that it directly affects the way we conduct business. So it's important that, you know, we get it right, so. I appreciate everybody's input. All right, anything else? All right, ordinance 2128.
An ordinance to amend the text of Greenwood Municipal Code, Chapter 8, Traffic and Parking Regulations, Article 2, to amend Section 88 for evening truck traffic on certain streets to include portions of Honey Creek and Smoky Row Roads, sponsored by Bates, Dine, Gibson, Hopper, and Hamilton, and Williams.
Mr. Johnson?
Good evening. The Johnston City Engineer, the ordinance, I know that was sent to you, I think it's really straightforward, so really if you had any questions, you can have it here later.
Everybody have a question? All right.
I would, I would like to ask if it's appropriate for you to share with us the truck that hit the house. And I would like to consider suspending the rules in moving this area.
So what I know, I think it was maybe three weeks ago, I guess there was a vehicle, a box truck, I think it was gonna, and I had, I had not seen the police report to it, but I believe that the, the truck was driving eastbound. Guess an oncoming vehicle caused it to slightly swerve off the road. One of its rear tires went off the road, causing it to swerve to go into the property, the house, or the yard, I'm sorry. It did strike a corner of the garage. And it ended, actually ended up behind the house where it's been a case of stuff. So that was three weeks ago. I think there was an incident, I'll say four years ago, where a cement truck actually rolled. It might have been, I don't think it was at the same address, I think it was maybe three or four houses, west, sorry, east, but ended up in a yard, probably, I'm not sure what caused that. It was after a rain, so I know that the soils were soft, so when it, when it rolled, it just ended up in the front yard, and then, and the second, sorry, the second part of your question, I apologize.
I just, I was just saying that I would like to make a request to have the rules first reading.
Right, we have a motion on Ms. Gibson to suspend the rules on ordinance 2128 through first reading. Do you have a second? Second by Mr. Hopper. I have a question. It prohibits trucks on Smoky Row Road between State Road 135 and Honey Creek. But I do know that Kroger, will this act, I mean, is there any exception? I mean, Kroger trucks would go down through there to back into...
Sure. So I kind of understand where you're going with your question. Certainly, I, I think it's to the benefit of the city that they're not, and I know normally that truck restrictions allow local deliveries. It's feasible to amend this, but I don't think it's necessary in this case. Those drivers do have the option of continuing on Lightland Road, using 135 to access Kroger. They do have a, an alternative.
Well, I was thinking they might be coming in off of 135, turn on to Smoky Row Road, because the truck delivery spot is on the southeast, or northeast corner. So, but if it's a local delivery, that's not, that would allow that? I'm just asking.
I believe that it would. I mean, it restricts it except for local deliveries, the truck, you know, whatever small portion needs you to do the delivery and then leave.
Okay. They just have to go in and out at 135, they couldn't go over to...
Couldn't take it all the way over there.
That'd be part of signage.
Of course.
Oh, I can, I can tell you that there's a fair amount of semis on Honey Creek Road. Surprising, so the GPS must be taking you there.
Yeah. By the way, we're actually still on suspension, so let's take a vote on suspension. Roll call on suspension, through first reading on ordinance 2128.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through first reading on ordinance 2128. Do you have a motion on first reading? Motion from Ms. Gibson, second. Second. Second by Mr. Bates. All right, any other discussion, questions for Mr. Johnson? All right, seeing none, then roll call, ordinance 2128, first reading.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye. Resolution, or ordinance 2128 passes first reading, nine to zero.
I'd like to move for suspension for second reading.
Motion by Ms. Gibson for suspension of the rules on ordinance 2128 through second reading. Second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion on suspension?
I suppose it's a safety issue, it makes sense.
Yeah. All right, roll call on suspension of the rules, ordinance 2128 through second reading.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
The motion to suspend the rules through second reading fails to pass. Moving on, resolution 2117.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council authorizing the filing of an application for the acceptance of and implementation of an Edward Burn Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $27,668 with the U.S. Department of Justice and related matters, funding for purchase of equipment, sponsored by Dine. This is the annual grant that we get, and we usually have to suspend rules to turn it around because the federal government thinks we do things in a single meeting. So if not tonight, probably then at the first reading, next meeting, there'll probably be a request for suspension.
These be filed by the second, I was told.
Yeah, so it can be timely done electronically. So if you want to do it tonight, yes.
All right, if we can do it tonight, let's do it. It'll be done. I hear a motion by Mr. Dine to suspend the rules through first reading, and second by Mr. Bates. Yes, sir. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call on suspension of the rules on ordinance 2117 through first reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Rules are suspended, a vote of nine to zero on resolution 2117 through first reading. Motion on first reading?
So moved.
Second, motion by Mr. Dine, second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, first reading, resolution 2117.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Resolution 2117 passes first reading, nine to zero.
If you want to suspend...
I have a motion by Mr. Dine to suspend the rules through second reading. Do you have a second by Mr. Bates? No?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Williams. Any discussion on suspension?
Why, didn't we not say that this could be done next meeting?
Well, Mr. Dine believes it has to be filed by August 2nd. That would be the, your, your first meeting in August would be August 2nd, so we may not get it timely filed.
Right.
Officer Rehm contacted me and sent me an email saying it did need to be filed by the 2nd of August.
Right, and our next meeting is that night.
Is the 2nd.
All right, any further discussion on suspension through second reading? Hearing none, then roll call, suspension of the rules through second reading, resolution 2117.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through second reading on resolution 2117. Do you have a motion on second reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Dine, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bates. Any further discussion on resolution 2117? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2117, second reading.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Resolution 2117 passes second reading, nine to zero. Resolution 2118.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Greenwood, City of Franklin, and Johnson County regarding allocation of 2021 Burn Justice Assistance Grant and related matters, sponsored by Dine.
Does everything we talked about on resolution 2117 apply to 2118?
Filing of those will be included.
All right, it also has to be filed by August the 2nd, so. I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules. A motion by Mr., who, who, Mr. Bates makes a motion, Mr. Lexi seconds that. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading of resolution 2118.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill. Hopper.
Oh, town pastor? Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through first reading on resolution 2118. Do you have a motion for first reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
By Mr. Dine. Any discussion? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2118, first reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Resolution 2118 passes first reading, nine to zero. Do you have a motion for suspension through second reading?
Yes, we did.
Motion by Mr. Dine, second by...
Sir.
Mr. Lexi. Any discussion on suspension through second reading? Seeing none, then roll call, suspension of the rules through second reading on resolution 2118.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.[1727.74]